Hello, Manatee County and welcome to the Manatee Herald's edition of Let's Talk where we're gonna do some straight talk with Jason Bearden, a Manatee County Commissioner candidate for an out-large seat. I am Mark Young. I am the opinion writer for the Manatee Herald. You can catch my columns a couple of times a week at manateeherald.com. It is called Tales From the Mark Side, Conservative Voice in Manatee County. You won't want to miss it. If you're a conservative, you need to join me. So we're gonna talk a little bit to Jason today about where he stands. He is someone that I very often tell people that you meet him, you know him, you kind of know where he stands, and I think you'll find that out today when we have this talk. You get to understand a little bit about why he's running for office, what he stands for. And of course, he is opposing Carol Whitmore for that large seat. Carol has been in office for the last 16 years, so Jason will talk about what's kind of different things that he can bring to to the seat and and what he thinks he can do for Manatee County. And as always, you can make your own decisions. Alright, so with that, a little word from our sponsor and then we'll get started. Hello, Manatee County. Welcome to the Manatee Herald Let's Talk. As I mentioned before, our special guest today is Jason Bearden. He is running for district or that large position for Manatee County Commission. Again, it's a long time to come, but Carol Whitmore. Jason, welcome to Let's Talk.
Thanks for having me, Mark.
This is uh, this is where liberal liberal spin is a sin and it won't be top rated, but I don't think I have to worry about that with you. Tell us, tell us a little bit, tell us a little bit about you, who you are.
Yeah, so um, essentially, I grew up in a military family. My dad was a 30-year career Marine. My mother was an immigrant. I grew up in a family of four, I'm the third of the four. You know, moved around a little bit, then ended up really spending most of my life in Texas and growing up on a small farm outside of Lubbock, Texas. My journey to go into the Marine Corps started March 20th, 2003. And I was watching the initial evasion to Iraq on Fox News and I just felt a strong calling at that point in time to take action. And so I went down to the recruiting station that same day and told them to sign me up and about 30 days later, I was off to boot camp April 21st, 2003.
Outstanding. Now, did you have any inclination of joining before that or you just?
I knew it was kind of in my heart. I had just graduated high school in 2002, went to college and did about a semester of that and like just had, like I said, had this strong call. I kind of knew in the back of my my mind that I might join. But when the war broke out, that's when I really felt like it was time for me to step up and take charge. And you know, during that time, I was surrounded amongst probably some of the best patriots this nation has to offer because we all knew what was going on. The majority of us, we knew that there was a war with that was going on. And if you signed up during that time, you signed up to to get in the fight. And so I've met a lot of great men, some of the greatest men I've ever met in my life were during my time in the Marines during that eight years from 2003 to 2011, which there was a lot that was going on during that time and but I will tell you this, a lot of those men that I met, you know, are are doing great things, right? They're doing great things after, you know, they got out of the Marines, whether they did four, they did eight or some of them maybe even did a whole whole career of that. One thing I will tell you is that when when it comes to protecting our constitution, I've seen the sacrifices firsthand and recognize that in in real time. And that's why I believe that other than the generation, World War II generation be the greatest generation, I believe that my generation of those who who really kind of stepped up, kind of follow in those same footsteps.
Yeah, you guys definitely faced a difficult task. There's there's nothing quite like the American warrior and I know I know here at the Manatee Herald, we certainly appreciate your service and honor that. Tell me, tell me how your your military experience has kind of transitioned into what you want to do politically?
Yeah, so I think a lot of that 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 transition that that I learned first off is leadership, right? I found myself even in the Marines, leading other Marines. And when you go into an infantry battalion, alright, for example, most people that have looked me up know that I'm a that I was a Marine sniper at one point in my life. When you go into an infantry battalion, because I was in the infantry, there's an opportunity for you to take a sniper, what we call a sniper end doc. And your end doc, which is essentially in civilian terms, will be a tryout, alright? And during my end doc, we had 36 Marines that went out for the end doc. And these Marines are essentially some of the best in the battalion, right? They've got the best physical fitness scores, they're the best shooters, they're the best, you know, they have the highest IQs. And essentially, they go and they try out. Well, out of 36 Marines, there was three of us left. I was happened to be one of the three at that point in time. And I think what I believe that I learned in the Marine Corps that transitions from back then to today is the leadership qualities that were instilled from in me since I was 18, 19 years old, right? Those have never left me. And when you're in that situation where you have to lead at a very young age, you learn really quick that you have to stand your ground on things and you have to push forward and you have to lead by example, right? Because you have younger Marines that are looking up to you, that are depending on you to keep them alive, especially in situations where you know, you go into combat zones, right? These these Marines are looking up to you to 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 be the leader, right? And if there's any sign of weakness at any time, they're gonna pick up on that and then it's hard for them to to follow you. They're just kind of just, you're just essentially becoming a manager. And I believe there is a difference in becoming a manager and then actually becoming a leader. I think leaders need to have vision. They need to be able to see what is going to happen before it happens. And also take the initiative. Initiative is a big word for me. I've learned initiative since I was a very small child. And my dad being a 30-year career Marine, it really instilled taking initiative and not waiting on somebody to tell you something to do. If you know that something needs to be fixed, take the action and do it and move that move that needle forward. And I think that's just something that's always kind of been instilled in me. And you know, it's kind of been instilled in me in me during this campaign, like I I I have to move the needle forward, I have to push forward. And a lot of times, you it it's on you to to be able to do that, to make to make those transitions and to to be able to make sound decisions on what you need to do next. And I believe that in all things of life, that when you're when you're trying to make a decision, you gotta stick with that decision and and go forward with it. I mean, I've been an entrepreneur essentially since I've been out of the Marines since 2011. And that's helped me a lot. And I believe that myself being a Marine sniper has helped me in regards to becoming an entrepreneur, right? Because you can't just wait back, you can't sit back and wait for things to come to you. You have to take the initiative and move move things forward. And I think that is a benefit that I can bring to the actual board is actually having vision, seeing what's happening and saying, hey, look, let's do this. I don't care how we get there. Let's just figure it out. Work together and figure it out. But this is what the issue that is confronted with us. We need to fix this issue. And so, you know, just really thinking outside the box, because you know, as a Marine sniper, they call you a independent operator, which you operate independently. And a lot of times, you during combat situation, you are the eyes and the ears for the battalion commander. Makes sense? So a lot of people think of snipers as, you know, they're gonna sit and they're sitting behind, you know, enemy lines and they're ready to take a shot. That's not the case. You know, the majority of their time is doing RNS reconnaissance and surveillance so that they can take that information that they can report back to the battalion commander and they can turn that into intelligence. Right? So there's a lot of times and situations where you have to make split decisions, right? And you have to think about what you're doing before you make that decision. So you're already kind of pre-planning it, I guess you could say, in a split second and understanding, hey, these are gonna be the results of this current situation. We need to move that forward.
One thing that I've I've learned about the Manatee County Commission is that they don't make split decisions. Correct. They they sit there and they they argue over the silliest things and drag out debates and 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 the constituents suffer for their lack of progress and moving that forward. So are you trying to say that that, I mean, I've been really impressed with your campaign. I've been, I've been, you know, I I I've given several people compliments on how you're running your campaign. You are running it like I would think a Marine would, you know? It's it's very grassroots, it's very down to earth. You have an objective, you have a mission and you're getting that done.
Correct.
So I think what I'm hearing from you is that you can bring that same strategy to the board to make those quicker decisions that need to be made without getting into the the fog of war, so to speak, where it gets a little bit nonsensical.
Well, you know, what I'm saying is that if there is a decision that needs to be made right then and there, I believe with my experience, I can do that. However, does in some cases, does there need to be proper planning to make a decision? Yes. But if I'm put on a spot to have to make a decision right then and there, I've been trained to do that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, it's not like, and those in those high intense, high stressful is what I'm talking about, environments where I've been put in those situations before, okay? Where the pressure so deep where you have to make a decision right now on this and it better be the right decision because that decision could be life or death, alright? In my world, in my former world, right? I believe that's been ingrained in me to be able to take the pressure, to be able to take the stress in those current situations to make a proper decision that would be the best decision in my point of view at that specific time, okay? Now, do I also believe in planning for certain things that are coming down the pipeline? Yes, I do. But if I had to make a decision on things right now, if you were like, Jason, I need you to make a decision right now. We have to do this right now. Piney Point's an example of that, right? You have to make a decision that quick. You don't have time to waste. Alright, so you have to think of every scenario and you gotta be able to take the initiative to make that decision.
Like the safety of your mind, when you're talking public safety, there's there shouldn't be no hesitation.
Exactly. Exactly. Because a lot of people will be caught like a deer, you know, you know, headlight, you know, deer with the headlights, right? Where they're just they're shocked. They don't really know what to do. And you see that in situations where, you know, when there's a big thing that happens, they're stuck. They don't really know what decision to make. And a lot of times, we don't have time for that.
So I don't know, I don't know how much information you have on the history of Piney Point, but I imagine you're you're pretty well caught up with it. This board had information that that there was a potential disaster there and they sat on it for what? A lot of our people believe to be way too long.
Twenty years.
Yeah, how would you handle that differently?
I think you have to keep pushing, pushing the the issue until something does get done. It's kind of one of those things, well, it's not my fault, it's their fault. Well, it's not their fault, it's my fault. Regardless of the fact, there is Manatee County residents that live around Piney Point. Those, if if I'm a county commissioner, those people are in my charge regardless. I can't make any excuses behind that, right? Because coming from my world, right? We could transition that to Marines. If there's an issue, it ain't some my superiors problem. It's my problem because I'm direct responsible for those Marines. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So maybe we didn't make enough noise. Maybe we didn't bang down the governor's door at those time in the last 20 years to say, no, listen, we need to get this done and we need to get it done now. We don't have time to waste. If this thing breaches, that's it, right? Because what if it did breach? Then whose fault is it gonna be?
Right.
Right? Because those are people that have that live around Piney Point. And if that area would have flooded, they would have had to find a different place to live, right? All their belongings, everything that 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 was theirs would have been completely gone, which then affects what? Affects my liberty, their liberty, right? Their God-given rights. And that's the biggest issue. That's the issue that because of decisions weren't made, they the people that were in power positions that could really bang down the door, right? Became a liability to liberty. So it all stems back to liberty. And a lot of people don't realize what liberty is, right? It's freedom with morality, right? You can't have liberty without morality, right? And so when you don't have people who are forward thinkers, who are really moving the needle to get things done, right? Then we're gonna have situations like Piney Point. But I believe that with this new board that we're gonna have come November 2022, we're gonna be put in a situation where we can move things forward, right? We gotta be done with reactionary leaders. People who only react, who are not proactive, who don't have any vision. We gotta be done with that. Because if we don't, we're gonna be in a world of hurt. And not just that, I believe that if my generation, our generation gets this messes this up and it starts all the way down to the local level, we're gonna be in a world of hurt. So we have one chance at this and as Ronald Reagan said, we're one generation away.
That is a fact. So so tell me, tell me, tell me what separates you. Carol has been sitting in that seat for 16 years. Tell me, tell me what separates you from her?
Well, for one, I'm not a career politician. I mean, she's been a career politician since 1991. And I think that 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 has been a big issue in our country is having career politicians who have been in office for a very, very, very long time. You know, I think that we need to change the way that we look at things in regards to our community, right? We we took $400 million and put and surplused it. And she was a big component of that. And we didn't spend it on infrastructure. And because we didn't spend it on infrastructure, now that $400 million worth of infrastructure is gonna cost us a billion dollars. That's pretty significant, right? So making sound decisions, I believe having an, coming from an entrepreneurial background, having vision, right? I believe you gotta have vision, right? You know, me, I'm a Christian, so you know, people without vision will perish. And if we don't start having people with that have the ability to see things before they happen, I believe the people are gonna perish, you know?
A lot of my readers think that Carol probably isn't conservative enough and that over the years, her her conservative aggressiveness has kind of waned quite a bit where she not my words, but some people refer to her as the Rhino type of Republican. Where where do you see, when you look at her and you look at yourself, the conservative values, where where do they?
I don't believe that she is a conservative. I believe she's the most liberal person on the board, more liberal than the Democrat that we have, based on her ideals. And I believe that's not a great representation of Manatee County. Manatee County is a very deep red county, very conservative county. So I'm the conservative and 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 she's the liberal. I mean, if you look at what she believes in, it would more line up with the liberal agenda, right? And I'm more line up with the conservative agenda. So I mean, it's pretty black and white. I don't think that we see eye to eye on a lot of our issues. I just don't. No one kind of where her thought process comes through and things like that. I just don't think that we see things in the same way or same light.
Well, there's certainly, there's certainly a problem in Manatee County with people throwing an R in front of their name and and taking advantage of the fact that this is a little bit of a Republican stronghold there in Manatee County. So I do see a lot of differences between you two and the question that I will have for her that I will ask you now, which I promised my readers that I would ask this question with you. I don't think it's gonna be that big of a surprise, but who did you vote for in the 2020 election?
Trump. Trump. I mean, I voted for Trump because of kind of like the same value. He he has the same essentially values that I line up with, right? He's a business, he's a businessman that has vision that essentially just says how it is. Maybe not, he doesn't say every, sometimes I'm like, gosh, why did he just say that? But I can get past that knowing where his policies are. Knowing that the things that he said that he was gonna do, he followed through and did them, right? And another thing is that he's really good at getting people surrounding, that surround him in a in a way to where he may not know the the answer, but he's gonna find the answer and then and then make a sound decision and then keep on that decision and move forward with it.
So you're not the type of person that would jeopardize the country over a mean tweet?
No, no, I actually kind of missed, I kind of missed the mean tweets.
I do too.
Though though, I mean, yeah, like I said, some things I was like, I don't know if that was the right thing to say, but I can deal with that. You know, I can deal with that when our country is thriving. I can deal with that when our country is in a situation where our economy is really boosting and seeing the best economy that we've ever seen. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Not leaving from behind.
Exactly. And that's that's a good thing about Trump. Trump always, he played politics, but he didn't play politics, right? Because he knew what the American people wanted, who put him in office and
Well, he's not a politically correct guy.
No, he's not. No, he's not. Yeah.
I like to say, I like to say it how it is too. Not only he punches and you can take all that PC stuff.
Correct. That's right. And that's
We just don't have time for it.
That's what the people loved. And that's why he was so strong on Twitter. Because the media would say one thing, but then he's sitting here with 50 million followers, he could push out information of what he truly said and what his thoughts were, which were which were more powerful. And when you have a media source like that, that's where you can be more effective, especially at his level, you know, and that's that's what he did. And he was really good at it. Probably one of the best, you know, marketers in the world, you know, really. He he knew how to sit, he knew how to send his message out to the world. And but he didn't only just send his message out to the world, like he kept to what he said he was gonna do. There's there's two, there's two things, right? There's one of just sending a message out, which happens with a lot of politicians today, right? And then there's another where you send a message out, message out, and then you actually do what you say you're gonna do.
Promises made, promises kept.
Correct.
Something you don't see in politics.
No, you don't.
Not even from past presidential
Correct.
Republican presidents, you know? I mean, he he was the first to do a lot of things presidents had had promised to do and just failed to do it. Now, I certainly want to get to some more topics and let you talk about your overall platform. But I think the other biggest thing in in Manatee County is is development, population growth, the cost of housing. Responsible, talk to me a little bit. I mean, I'm glad it's not infrastructure, but the difference between development and responsibility.
So I don't think we have a development problem. Essentially, I think we have an infrastructure problem. That's what it boils down to. People are gonna move down here, period. We're gonna, we're gonna expect another, what is it? To expected 200,000, which I think is gonna be more than that in the next 20 years. Major cities consider 500,000, we're at 420. We're not gonna stop people from moving here, period. And so I don't believe that we have a building problem. I build, I believe what we have an infrastructure problem. That's that's where we need to hone in, is really concentrate on our infrastructure because if we don't, it's gonna affect us big time and who knows? I mean, I honestly, I don't think that we have to fix our issues today. I really don't think that we have enough money as a county to really fix our issues. I think we're gonna have to really reach out to the state and federal level to see if we can get some funding from them to really kind of hone in and fix our infrastructure issues.
What kind of people are you looking to draw? I mean, people are gonna come. There's been a concerted effort for some time now to bring in the so-called millennials and make this a live work and play county. But the way that the the cost of housing is going, the lack of affordable housing, you can't get these young people to come live and work in Manatee County and not be able to pay a mortgage or a rent.
Correct. So I mean, the only way that I see this happening is honestly through negotiations with the landowners, right? We're gonna start having to look at other options, you know, elevating, you know, condominiums and and giving incentives in regards to, hey, if we let you build X amount of height, will you do 20, 25% workforce housing, right? That could be an incentive for a builder to say, you know what, we'll do that deal. One of the things that I know is that we gotta allow the free market to capitalize on the opportunities that that are out there, right? Because it's gonna happen, right? Being entrepreneurs, right? We're gonna see an opportunity and then we're gonna capitalize on that opportunity, right? If we see a need in the market, most likely, somebody will try to fill that need in the market. We don't need government stepping in and controlling the situation because government is not the answer. Right? It never has been and never will be. That's why we're in the mess that we're in today.
Right, yeah, I would totally agree with that. I mean, you do have to let the free market system work, but at the same time, you have all the power sitting up on on in that kind of a seat to to really make sure that when it comes to infrastructure, these developers are doing what they need to do to make sure that infrastructure can handle that situation. When it comes to traffic, given our potential growth, I don't know if there's an ultimate solution to that down the road. I know the city of Bradenton is, excuse my language, screwed, you know, because when they put the roadway system in, there's just no room to to expand and grow.
They didn't think it was gonna happen.
Right. Yeah, Manatee County has still opportunity to at least keep traffic flowing.
Yep.
And the 44th Street expansion, 44th Avenue expansion was was a good start. Is there anything else that you see along those lines that that can help traffic flow?
We're affected by the traffic situation today because of decisions that were made in the last 16 years. Right? When you harbor up $400 million, as I said before, and surplus and you don't spend it on the infrastructure, we're gonna have infrastructure issues, period. And that's what essentially happened. And that's what essentially happened. Do I believe that there, that we can fix our current situation regarding that? Yes. Do I believe it's gonna take a lot more funding? I do. Do I think that we're also gonna have to reach out to our state representatives? As well as look at possibly getting some type of federal funding? Yes, cuz I believe that's the only really way to fix the situation that we're currently in. We're about to be a five hundred thousand person county. That's considered a major city in the United States of America. We'll probably approach that in the next five or six years.
Well, what I, what I'd like to see is, and when, and I know the city of Bradenton is not, you know, what we're talking about here, but, um. Uh, I'd like to see more of that business kind of expand outwards into, into Manatee County. Everything residential to where people will have a lot more opportunity to be able to do business and go to stores around their communities where they don't have to drive so far. And, and to me, that would mean less traffic on, on the roads as well. Um, do you think the county is doing enough to promote business outside of, of the city limits that we have?
Yeah, I believe that we're on the road and, and moving in that direction as, as the board is, is currently doing, you know, with parish and the parish area there. Um, uh, you know, there's, there's, um, plans in place to build essentially a, a town square. Which is awesome because the people out in parish, right, they have to drive all the way out here to get, to have dinner, to, to, you know, to, to, to do anything, right? Because there's not a lot of commercial out there. Now Lakewood Ranch, that's, that's where I live. Um, we're starting to get, and I live out on, right off sixty-four, we're starting to see a lot more commercial being developed out there as well.
I think Lakewood Ranch is actually a very good example cuz it's a very self-sustained community.
It is now.
People really don't have to venture too far away from their house to get everything that they need. Well, Jason, I, I, I do wanna keep, I wanna, I wanna talk a little bit more about your overall platform, but before we do that, let's, let's go ahead and let our viewers and my readers know how they can help you or in touch with you.
They can go to my website at www dot votebearden dot com. That's just spelt B E A R D E N, votebearden dot com. And there's a plethora of information on my, my website. If they wanna donate, there's a donate tab. Uh, they can send me an email, um, anything to get ahold of me, or they can go to my Facebook page. Um, I have a pretty active Facebook page that they can send a message out to me if they have any questions or if they would like to get involved in the campaign or donate.
Excellent. So just kinda sum up for everybody, kinda like what your, what your overall platform is.
So four things. First thing is protect liberty. You know, I had a gentleman the other day, he asked me, well, what's the main reason why you're running? And I said liberty. And he looked at me, he said, well, that's stupid. I said, really? That's stupid. Because can you tell the Marine that got blown up that running a platform on liberty is stupid or you know, people who've lost their lives that it was stupid? Cuz I don't believe that in this day and age and this dispensation that protecting liberty is stupid, right?
I'll, I'll cut in there for one second because that obviously bothers me a little bit. I, I'm very fond of saying it is something that I firmly believe in, that you build a nation from the community out. Not the other way around. You know, it's, and that's why the, the phrase, all elections are local, really does matter to me.
It does.
Because you and we can start here and in other parts of the, the country where these, you know, where, where conservatives and Republicans live and, and, and create an environment of conservative values and expand that outwards. That's how, that's how the country grows. That's how we succeed. So when, when someone says liberty is stupid. You're, you're spinning in the face of everything that.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it, it, it was very, very, I had to kinda hold myself back and really kinda, did he just say that type of situation? Because, um, the primary purpose, right? Of an elected official, the primary job, which a lot of them have lost touch with, is to protect liberty. Is protect the rights of the people. Because when you raise your right hand to defend the Constitution, you took an oath.
That's a fact.
To defend the Constitution. And so it's, it's so important to me that the people's rights are protected. All people's rights, not a certain group of people's rights. All people's rights are protected at all times and they're not being suppressed. And we don't have elected officials who are in office who are a liability to liberty.
And I think the pandemic was an excellent example of that, of how quickly local government can take control of your life.
And that's honestly, you know, if you think about the pandemic, it's a blood, it was a curse, but then there's also a blessing at the same time. In the sense that it allowed the American people, from the local standpoint, to really wake up and say, what the heck just happened, right? Um, and I think, uh, for the most part, the majority of, of the American people saw that, right? And, and, and now we're fighting for that more than ever. You know, you, you, you fight out, uh, for liberty and freedom on foreign soil. You never thought that you'd be doing it from a standpoint and, and on domestic soil, right? And so now we have to, we do it, you know, obviously not in the ways of uh, doing it on domestic foreign land, or I'm sorry, on foreign land. But we're doing it within our current government system that we currently have right now.
Which is then showcase more than, than it ever has before, in my opinion. But, but the truth is, is, is we are always fighting for that liberty and those freedom in every election that we have. Because, I mean, there are two parties in the system, one that wants to restrict, restrict your liberties and one that wants to give you more of your liberties. You know, it really comes down to the basics of, of that, you know, so, so. And I didn't mean to cut you off or
No, you're fine.
Or, or you got my fire up a little bit.
I could do that every once in a while.
I wanna hear people say something like that, I'm just like, whoa, wait, what?
Well, see, that's, that's our current environment that we're dealing with right now, right? Because these people that are saying that obviously aren't supporting me, right? They're obviously supporting the opposition. Because they're from Manatee County. Right? So they're obviously not supporting me, they're supporting the opposition. And so that's an, another issue within itself is that we have to quit looking at people like, I disagree with my friends all day long. It doesn't mean, uh, I said, I have friends all day long, doesn't mean I agree with them on everything that they say, right? And that's the truth. Right? Um, and so
You have disagreements, but you have to be, there has to be some kind of logic to it. I, I keep telling my readers liberalism is a disease, you know, it's a mental disorder. It's proven science too.
Yeah, it is.
But it's only science that they don't wanna follow. They're liberal out there watching, that's sorry, not sorry, you know, I don't care, there's just something wrong with you. So I, I didn't mean, so, so liberty was the first one.
So, uh, yeah, and then, um, the second one is obviously catching up with our infrastructure. Uh, continue to create that plan, enhance it, ensuring that we're gonna have the proper infrastructure. Uh, and, and knowing the fact that as many people that are moving down here, that we're gonna continue to have to move that needle. Because that's gonna be a very, very important one, uh, later on down the road, um, and today as well. Um, the third one is a veterans program to create an extensive, working with the other local veteran organizations to create an extensive one, right? Not one that makes a veteran feel like they're another check in the box by another government entity, right? But actually giving them the help that they need to make them become successful. Whether that's how, if they wanna start a business, how do you start a business? How do you create a business plan? How do you, you know, uh, is there marketing? Cuz we have local veteran organizations that are already in that business world that we could plug them in and just creating that platform where here's a list of veteran organizations. The, you know, somebody's doing a class over here on Tuesday nights about how to start a business. Or, you know, you need help with VA benefits, right? Uh, there's a, there's a program over here that's specifically for that. Here's an attorney over here that can help you get the VA benefits that you believe you, you, you deserve. Um, and just creating that system to help these vets so that they become successful, because here's the thing, right? I believe truly that veterans are some of the best leaders that our community has to offer. All they need is a little bit of hands up, right? To get them started in that process, right? I don't wanna get another call and, uh, over the phone of a veteran that has been dealing with, with major issues and, and thinking about obvious, you know, uh, possibly committing suicide, right? Because, uh, there's too many. When, when I have people who have told me that they have lost more Marines due to suicide than they did in a combat zone, that's an issue. And I believe that issue has to deal with veterans maybe not feeling like they're part of society. So that if we can get them the help that they need to make sure that they can get plugged in society, whether that's get them plugged in the local clubs, help them get started, uh, you know, give them the information on how to start a business, get them the help with the resources that we have here locally with some of these other or veteran organizations, I think that we can drive it home and help them get the help that they need so that they can become successful. Right? Um, and then the, uh, the, um, the fourth thing is workforce housing. Right? We need to create more of that. We, we need to continue to, to, um, to work with, with some of these builders and negotiate deals where they're creating, uh, more workforce housing, right? Um, I think that's important, right? Because one thing that we don't wanna end up like is, like what state? Do we know? California, okay? California, right? And, and, and having more workforce housing, if we don't have enough, it, it creates so many more issues, right? Look at California, nineteen eighties, it was a Republican state. Everybody wanted to move to California. Why? Because of the weather, because it was beautiful, right? So they flocked to California. Well, what happened over time was that their economy essentially tanked, right? Because they had high class, low class, no working class. Small businesses couldn't afford to pay the hourly wages, taxes were high, right? And if we don't have enough workforce housing, right? What's gonna happen is our taxes will increase for the county. Why is that? Well, the reason behind that is because we have to supplement the cost of living for our county employees who we pay. So if their salaries begin to increase significantly, our taxes will increase, right? People will move out, right? Because they can no longer li- afford to live here. And then we're put in a situation where there's no employees. None of these small businesses can hire anybody. Right? Because hourly wa- wages are so high because they have to supplement the cost of living or they're gonna go somewhere else, right? So it's a balance. But, you know, we need more workforce housing. We do. And so just working with the other commissioners, um, you know, working together to continue to move that needle forward and negotiations with, uh, the free market, essentially to see what we can do to make that happen.
Excellent. Well, I think that pretty much wraps things up, uh, Manatee County, um. I, I've said one thing about Jason pretty much over and over again, and if you read one of my recent columns, which you should be reading at the manateeharbor dot com. Jason is someone that you meet, you know where he stands in the story and, and I find that to be I'm not allowed to give any official endorsements during the primary campaigns, but I will say it's, it's very refreshing uh, to see someone like Jason come up. He, long history of public service and sacrifice and, and he's willing to step up and provide that service again, so, um, go check him out, see what he's all about. Uh, I think you got a pretty good idea today and thanks for joining us and
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate you for having me. You guys are doing great things.